Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for attending today. My name is James Lenhoff, and it looks like we are getting the presentation up and started here. And I am the Assistant Commissioner for the Multifamily Division at Minnesota Housing, which includes all of our production teams. I'm excited to be here with several colleagues that we'll introduce here in a moment. But first, I want to say thank you again for sharing your time with us to discuss this one-time Home ARP funding. And as part of the presentation, you'll learn a little more about what Home ARP means. And I'll say, while public hearings can sometimes have a certain administrative quality to them, the reality is that they really do shape the direction of policy and implementation and how we bring these programs together. Here at Minnesota Housing, we've seen how public input has shaped the recent Qualified Allocation Plan, how it shapes the Agency Strategic Plan. And here's an opportunity to participate in this new funding source that we'll be able to implement for eligible uses throughout the agency once we get through this HUD-defined process. And speaking of that HUD-defined process, as we go through these different steps, I'm very excited to introduce our partners at ICF, Heather Dillashaw and Stephanie Carl, who are facilitating and providing a lot of support for Minnesota Housing in our team to wrap this up, so we can ultimately get to implementation and addressing the housing needs here in Minnesota. So with that, thank you so much for joining us today. I will be on the line for some time here. I look forward to hearing the public comments. And here we go, Heather and Stephanie, please take it from here.
Thanks, James. And thank you, everyone, again, for being here. We're going to go through a brief presentation about what Home ARP funding is and what it is not, a little bit, but mostly what it is and what the state of Minnesota has allocated to them, as well as some feedback that we have gotten through several, a series of several meetings and one-on-one conversations with community partners across the state of Minnesota. Next slide, please.
My apologies, give me just one moment.
Great, thanks, Kristi. Minnesota Housing's core purpose is housing, right? So these Home ARP funds are very important to the mission of Minnesota Housing, and we're going to detail what that means. Next slide. So here's the background on Home ARP funds. Home American Rescue Plan funds came through the American Rescue Plan that was established in 2021. They are intended to reduce homelessness and increase housing stability. And in Minnesota, there are seven participating jurisdictions. That's a term that the Department of Housing and Urban Development uses to identify their sub recipients. So these seven PJs will receive awards directly from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The state of Minnesota, and that's the allocation that we're going to talk about today, the cities of Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth also have direct awards. And Hennepin, Dakota, and St. Louis counties also have direct awards. These are all one-time awards with funding available until 2030. For all of these awards, the use of the funds is informed by community partners across the region and a data analysis that identifies the local needs and gaps in housing, shelter, and services. The state of Minnesota's direct allocation is a little over $31 million. Next slide, please. So Home American Rescue Plan funds can provide a broad range of housing and supportive services. They can create new standalone projects, and they can be used in combination with other Home ARP projects and funding programs. For example, the seven participating jurisdictions in Minnesota can choose to do joint projects if that is something that all parties agree to. We're going to look at the needs and gaps that have been identified across the state of Minnesota, both from our data analysis as well as from feedback from those community partners and individuals we've talked with. We'll look at what has been identified as who is most in need of these services and then opportunities for addressing those needs with this funding. Next slide, please. Important definitions here around who is eligible to benefit from these funds. These are federal funds, and they are governed by the regulations that we'll be talking through over the next few slides. To be eligible to benefit from these federal funds, you must be in one of these qualifying populations. It's also important to note, and we are very aware, that humans don't categorize as easily as into one bullet. And many people and households that you may know or are a part of may qualify in more than one category, and that is okay, too. But those four populations as defined by the Federal Register is: One, individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Two, individuals and families at risk of homelessness. Three, individuals and families fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. And then fourth, other populations for whom supportive services or assistance or financial assistance would prevent homelessness or are at greatest risk of housing instability. Next slide, please. So those are the qualifying populations. Those are the households and individuals that could benefit from these funds. The activities that Minnesota Housing has the opportunity to fund to meet those needs are on this slide. Affordable rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, which would be rental assistance that is attached to a household or an individual, supportive services, which can mean a number of different things. That we all know that there are a lot of services that increase housing stability or the opportunity for housing stability and supportive services is a broad category that can include the services necessary for an individual or family to remain or become stably housed. Fourth, the acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter. And five, nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance. The next few slides, we will go into more detail about what is eligible under each of these categories. So for affordable rental housing, so this is what I often call bricks and sticks, right? This is the actual units. It can be, you can, these funds can be used to acquire existing housing, construct new housing or rehab and/or rehab existing housing. So those housing types include several kinds: single or multifamily, transitional housing, permanent housing, group homes, single-room occupancy units, or manufactured homes. Next slide, please. So tenant-based rental assistance, as I noted earlier, this is attached to an individual or household that qualifies. What it means, but there are some specifics around what kind of assistance can be provided. Basic rental assistance, monthly rent, but can also include security deposit assistance, that maybe there is someone who has another funding stream or income for the monthly rent itself. But as we know, the security deposits can be very high now, and this funding could be the way that someone can access a unit by paying a security deposit. Rental assistance is not required to be used with a security deposit. There's also utility deposit assistance. That does have to be combined with either rental assistance or security deposit assistance. It is not able to be used as a standalone activity. And then project delivery costs for tenant-based rental assistance include inspecting housing units to make sure that they are appropriate and qualify for federal rental assistance and determining eligibility for those who would be accessing the assistance. Next slide, please. Supportive services. So for those of you that may be familiar with other federal funding streams, these names may be familiar to you, and if you are not, they may not be, and that's okay. But this particular funding stream combines and modifies services from three already existing federal programs. One is the Continuum of Care Program. One is the Emergency Solutions Grant, Homelessness Prevention Services Program. And then Housing Counseling, and that is a specific supportive service that is provided by a HUD-certified housing counselor. These supportive services projects can be projects on their own, or they could be paired with another Home ARP project, such as rental assistance, emergency shelter, or permanent housing, so they can be used in a number of different ways. Next slide, please. And then non-congregate shelter, but we saw this a lot, especially in the early days of the pandemic, to help folks be safe from the spread of COVID-19. This is not tied to COVID-19 in the same way as other funding you may be familiar with, but it is intended, if the need is determined that this is the need that needs to be addressed, to expand and update emergency shelter stock. This is a more challenging activity because it does not include operating costs. The only costs that are eligible for non-congregate shelter is the acquisition and rehab. So that does not include operating. Once the certificate of occupancy is there, that would be the end of the way that the Home ARP funding would be able to be used, except for some money for replacement reserves. So that, for those projects to be viable, Minnesota Housing would have to determine if they can fund projects that do not have a viable plan for long-term stability. Next slide, please. And the last category for activities is nonprofit operating and capacity building assistance. This is a very specific federal government term or phrase about what this means. It means operating expense assistance and capacity building assistance, and at the same time, it is tied directly to the funding it is available in. So this, so for example, a nonprofit wanted to apply for a certain activity that Minnesota Housing decides to fund, and Minnesota Housing would like to make this funding available as well. They could apply for additional funding for capacity building and operating assistance to help them operate the project that they're applying for. So it has to be used in conjunction with a Home ARP activity, and it is also capped for Minnesota Housing at 5% of their overall Home ARP allocation. Next slide, please. So each participating jurisdiction, in this case, Minnesota Housing, can establish reasonable preferences for Home ARP assistance that are based on local housing needs that have been determined through this data analysis that is underway and that addresses the priorities that are identified in the plan that they must submit to the Department of Housing and Urban Development to access these funds. So what these do is prioritize a particular qualifying population or maybe a sub-population's admission to a particular project or program. Next slide, please. Finally, for this part, the referral methods for projects must also be determined by Minnesota Housing, and the options are to expand existing coordinated entry that accepts these additional qualifying populations identified in this funding stream, coordinated entry with other referral methods, such as a 211 call center, and then a standard project activity waiting list that likely most folks are familiar with. Coordinated entry, just as a note, this is on the slide as well. It is a system that is tied to HUD's Continuum of Care and Emergency Solutions Grant programs, so it does exist in the state of Minnesota, across the state. Is it a potential way to do referrals for the programs that are set up through this funding? Next slide, please. So I'm going to hand it to Stephanie, and she's going to take you through the planning process that is underway, has been underway for a few months, for this funding and the feedback that we have already gotten from many people across the state of Minnesota. Stephanie?
All right, thank you, Heather. So before HUD releases the funds to Minnesota Housing, there is a planning process centered on hearing from impacted communities, organizations, and the public on the Home ARP program and its potential uses. So where are we in the process? Right now, we're in the first two steps you see here on the slide. The first step is holding consultation meetings. We have just completed an extensive consultation series culminating in the meeting today to hear feedback from you, where we have given background information on what Home ARP is and provided space for feedback and comments on needs. In the next few slides, we'll share with you the themes that have come out of the consultations we have held so far. While this has been happening, we've also worked with organizations statewide to collect data around the needs and gaps analysis. All of the feedback we have received and what we received tonight will inform the draft of an overall allocation plan that will summarize the consultations, gaps, and needs, describe the planned use of the funds, and estimate the number of units and/or people served. A draft of the allocation plan will be posted for public comment prior to submission to HUD for approval, which will give all of you another chance to provide input. Next slide. In addition to the public hearing today, there were a number of consultation meetings held for a comprehensive and diverse engagement with impacted communities. This slide highlights the high-level consultation groups we have met with through this process, who have provided extensive feedback on gaps and needs facing the qualifying populations and how the eligible activities could help overcome common themes. Some of you or members of your organizations may have participated in one of these meetings. Next slide, please. We have conducted over 10 virtual consultations from December 7, 2022, through January 31, 2023. During these consultations, we presented the same slides that all of you saw here tonight from Heather, and then facilitated discussion to capture funding priorities and unmet needs. We consulted with over 170 organizations and over 400 individuals. In addition, we held several one-on-one meetings to dive deeper into needs of underserved communities. Over the next few slides, we will share the overarching themes for each of the five eligible activities of the Home ARP program. Of the five eligible activities, the top priority was affordable rental housing. Next slide, please. What exactly does it mean when we say the top need was affordable housing? According to the consultations, there is a need across the state for deeply affordable rental housing that is safe, decent, and accessible, especially for those with extremely low incomes. Rental housing of various sizes, close to amenities like public transit, grocery stores, and community services are needed to meet the needs of both individuals and families. Such units could consider alternative application processes that lower barriers, especially for those with credit issues, to have access to housing. And pairing the rental units with supportive services could strengthen housing stability for many residents of Minnesota. It was also noted that difficulties in rising rents has slowed down the ability for residents to use vouchers or use rental subsidy programs, calling for a need of increasing affordable housing stock. Next slide. Affordable housing was not the only activity where need was highlighted. Tenant-based rental assistance, another eligible activity of Home ARP, could help combat the rising market rent increases that have caused many households to struggle to keep up with costs. Additional funding here can help supplement other rental housing programs that are running low on funds or create new programs to serve qualifying populations. In addition, supportive services could help provide housing stability for many. Consistently throughout consultations, there was a noted need for supportive services that are culturally specific, that are available across Minnesota to help meet the needs of the richly diverse communities and assist with overcoming language barriers. Noting here, too, that pairing supportive services with financial assistance can provide a more holistic solution to stabilize households falling behind on rents or facing eviction. Next slide, please. For non-congregate shelter, there was a recognition that current shelter capacity isn't matching the number of individuals experiencing homelessness, and this is particularly felt in greater Minnesota. The non-congregate shelter model was noted as an alternative, safe space for households that may have additional needs not best met in congregate settings. Shelter programming would need to be low barrier and provide a clear path to stable housing. Finally, new funding sources require expansion. An eligible cost under nonprofit capacity building assistance could help provide salaries for new staff, increase salaries to retain seasoned staff, and help expand operations to incorporate new program designs with training and support. It was noted that many organizations have reached full operational capacity and would need funds to expand to meet new programming needs. Collectively, these were the themes we witnessed across the consultations relating to the Home ARP eligible activities. Next slide, please. Thank you so much for allowing us to share the overview of Home ARP and the themes we have heard statewide thus far. This process is in the beginning stages, and we appreciate public feedback. If you have additional questions or comments after tonight, you can email Minnesota Housing at the email above. Or, so our presentation is now over, and the public hearing is now open. To participate in the public hearing, you can type a question in the Q&amp;A section or raise your hand to voice a comment or question, and we can unmute you. Thank you so much.
We do have one question from a minute. Are direct cash transfers to people, not landlords, correlated to rent-eligible?
No, they are not with these funds.
Another question in the chat. What is the anticipated date of being able to RFP for the money, or whatever the process may be?
That's a great question. The timeline that we know right now is this allocation plan that HUD requires to access the funding is due March 31st. Once it is submitted to HUD, HUD has 45 days to review that for approval. Once it is approved, Minnesota Housing then can work toward an RFP process. So it would be sometime after that. So it would be sometime after the 45-day review period, assuming that the plan is approved immediately. It would be sometime after that. But Minnesota Housing has not determined at this time exactly what those dates will be because they have to wait on HUD.
Another question from chat. How will you decide what areas?
Can you say more about that?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Sorry to interrupt on that item. I thank you, Heather, for that, and that is all 100% correct. And the part that I wanted to add in related to potential RFPs is that one of the considerations we have here is trying to find opportunities where, once we know what the final allocation plan looks like and the potential uses, is are there opportunities to pair those funds with other existing consolidated RFP processes? Well, that's not an answer on the timing component. What we are trying to do is to not have additional administrative burden or barriers to accessing the funds if we can pair it up in an existing program. Now, we can't say exactly what that looks like because we don't know what the final plan looks like yet. So it may be that there is a different path, but that's very much on our minds, so that we're not, we're trying to align things where we can, especially for projects that may need funds above and beyond Home ARP funds if we're able to access another Minnesota housing resource. So just want to note that that is very much on our minds as part of this planning process.
All right, a question from the chat. Will there be an application process for applying for funds?
There will be, yes. As James just noted, it is not determined yet exactly what that will look like, but there will be a process for that.
And another question from the chat. How will you decide what areas of the state to prioritize?
That's a very good question. James, do you want to chime in on that one?
There we go. Had to wait for the technology to start back up here. I will say, generally speaking, for Minnesota Housing, with all of our multifamily resources, the entire state is always our focus. And in terms of prioritization to any particular geographic area, one of our general mandates is to have, I'll say, a reasonable distribution across the state. Now, that doesn't mean that every project can be selected, but it also doesn't mean that we expect to have a priority in one particular geography. We will look for options for both greater Minnesota and for the metro area, all of which will ultimately be contingent to the part that we don't know today is what will be in the final allocation plan and the anticipated uses.
I will note, I don't think we noted this earlier, is that the final allocation plan, a draft of that, will be available for public comment prior to submission to HUD. So that is your additional opportunity to make comment on what Minnesota's draft plan looks like. And that public comment period will be 15 days sometime in March.
Thank you. Is there a reason why this is more aligned towards shelter versus barrier to entry to homeownership and low-income buyers?
That's a good question. It is federal funding, and in this particular funding stream, it is, homeownership activities are not eligible. So I don't know. That was a decision by the federal government.
Thank you. Another question from the chat. Are these home funds limited to folks at 60% AMI or below?
Not necessarily, no. The qualifying, different from annual home or with the home program, for those of you who are familiar with it, Home ARP expands the definition of who can be served, so it is not limited to income limits in the same way. It is about who, which qualifying population the individual or household is in, rather than those income limits.
Next question. Do you know how much per org will be allocated?
James, I'm assuming that question is per organization, and I don't think that's how you do your process, but I would let you weigh in on that.
That's correct, yeah. We don't allocate based on a particular organization. I think to the earlier question, what we would anticipate is having a request for proposal process based on what the final allocation plan looks like and the eligible uses. And that's where, where feasible, we'll try to align existing RFPs for other Minnesota housing resources with Home ARP, if that's possible to do.
Thank you. Next question from the chat. With rental housing as a top priority, how is the state planning on allocating funds to projects? Will the full amount be allocated to rental housing, or will some also be used for other eligible expenses? Will the funding be rolled into the super RFP?
So right now, the state is not, Minnesota Housing has not determined that. The full gaps, the full needs assessment and gaps analysis has not been completed. We do have a lot of feedback, but the full data analysis has not been completed. Once all of that information has been collected, Minnesota Housing will make those determinations, but that has not been decided.
And actually, as part of this public hearing process and gathering input, if there are thoughts on how to use those funds for the eligible uses in qualifying populations, that is something that we are looking to hear today and through the public hearing process. But I think referencing the super RFP, or more commonly the consolidated RFP, for those of you that aren't familiar, those are two different names for actually the same thing, that if we, if it ultimately is determined in the allocation plan to use some portion of the funds for capital funding, it may be that we're able to make those available through the annual consolidated RFP. But that's subject to all the final process and necessary HUD approvals and such. But I think that's a great example of if we can pair some portion of it with existing RFPs, we would likely look to do that.
Thank you, James. Another question from the chat. Sexual violence programs across Minnesota are struggling with staff retention and capacity due to impacts of COVID-19, which impacts their ability to support victims and survivors experiencing homelessness. Would these programs be eligible for these funds if sexual assault survivors are a qualifying population?
Yes. Again, Minnesota Housing has not determined which activities they will fund. Of the five activities that are eligible, they do not have to fund all of them. And most places would not choose to fund all five activities because the money only goes so far. But those organizations, if they, if an activity that is being funded is something that they are interested in, my assumption would be that they would be able to apply because the folks that they serve are part of the qualifying populations.
Thank you, Heather. The next question is actually an extension of a previously answered question. The previous question was, how will you decide what areas of the state to prioritize? And the addition is, and will you be strategic about certain populations?
James?
Yeah, I think the answer on the geographic part of which states to prioritize is the same answer. is the same answer as before. We look to serve the entire state, and there's not yet to determine a priority for any particular area. We've looked to both greater Minnesota and the metro area. And I'm afraid my audio cut out there for a moment for part of the question, so I didn't get the full question.
The previous question was, how will you decide what areas of the state to prioritize? And the extension is, and will you be strategic about certain populations?
I would like to think we will be strategic in the overall plan. I think in terms of how that comes together, particular qualifying populations, that's the part that will be coming together here in the coming weeks as the allocation plan is drafted for additional public review. And I acknowledge that's a very administrative answer, and it's because we are mid-process.
Next question. We have residents still struggling to get caught up with past due rent due to COVID. Would these funds be available to existing residents in affordable housing to prevent evictions for non-payment of rent? How quickly would these funds become available?
The fourth qualifying population are folks at risk of homelessness or for whom additional assistance would prevent eviction. So potentially, again, goes back to what James is saying. It depends on what activities the Minnesota Housing decides to fund out of their allocation, but that is a possibility.
We do have, sorry, go ahead, James.
I was gonna say, Heather, in terms of availability, you would reference the time between getting the allocation plan done, HUD approval and such. So it's sometime out before these dollars are even available to Minnesota housing.
Right. There is, there are very few places in the country where these dollars are actually out in communities yet because people are still working on approval by HUD to use the funds.
Thank you. We do have two raised hands. I'd like to go to Sue. Sue, you have been unmuted by the organizer. You will need to unmute your online.
Thank you very much. Sue Wackel Phillips from Michael and the Metropolitan Interfaith Council on Affordable Housing. And thank you for answering some of the questions already to follow up on this not having the same regulations as the regular home dollars of up to 60% of median income. If you could talk a little bit about how, I know that a lot of the comments has really been focused on extremely low income, which is 30% of AMI and below area median income. How you will ensure that happens? And then if I could just ask a couple of other questions at the same time, if that's okay?
Yeah, I think, what's the question? I heard your comments. I didn't, I'm not sure I understood the question.
The question is, since there is not the income threshold, but rather the, kind of the criteria, how will you ensure that the dollars are going to those with the greatest need? Those folks at 30% and below? And if it's okay, I'll just ask the other two questions real quick. On the housing counseling, I wasn't real clear when you were talking, Heather, about that housing counseling certification is utilized to help people prepare to become homeowners. And I wanted to have clarification if these dollars can be utilized for that. We obviously have a great need for folks from diverse communities to become certified as housing counselors to help folks make that preparation to become homeowners. And then I wanted to make sure that, obviously, we have a lot of dollars in DHS for supportive services. How you will coordinate the home dollars with DHS funding so that we can use the majority of these dollars to actually house people through rehab and building new housing, as well as we strongly support the tenant-based rental assistance, too.
Okay, so your first, thanks, Sue. For the first question, Minnesota Housing would only be able to have that, have the funding restricted to extremely low-income houses if they decide to say they have a preference for that in their projects. That is a possibility. That is something that they can choose to do in their plan to HUD. If they don't choose to do that preference, they can't make people do that, for lack of a better way to say that. It would have to be open to all of the qualifying populations, which do not all have an income limit on them, right? So again, that hasn't been determined, but it is a possibility that they could do that. Your second question around housing counseling. Housing counseling actually is being used by more and more folks for rental stability as well. And so in this particular instance, it is not, would not be a housing counseling for homeownership. It would be housing counseling for rental stability. And it is not for, it falls under supportive services. It isn't for certification, but it is saying you can use supportive services dollars for housing counseling for rental stability, right? So that a housing counseling agency or an agency that employs housing counselors that are working with rental households could be funded through some of these supportive services. And then your third question, I lost.
Yeah, that's okay. It's, I'm sorry. Is the coordination with Department of Human Services. Obviously, that's where the majority of our supportive services dollars come from. And where a possible, obviously, would want to use those dollars and use these home AARP dollars to actually rehab and build additional housing units, and then also to be used for tenant-based rental assistance. And wondering if there's going to be, or if there is the possibility of putting into the plan a preference for communities to attempt to get the supportive services first from Department of Human Services before utilizing these dollars for supportive services.
I'll let James or Rachel talk about their coordination with other state agencies.
Yeah, so we do closely coordinate with DHS in a number of different ways. And I, you know, I'm going to speak very broadly on this part of it because we don't have an RFP process put together yet for exactly how these pieces would work together. But if we take the existing consolidated RFP process as an example, where we do have a number of housing projects that do access resources ultimately from DHS, housing support probably being the most notable one, is that we would certainly look for ways to coordinate and be efficient in the use of those resources and to get them in as many projects as possible. I think those, the actual mechanics of how that will work are hard to answer until we have the final allocation plan and know which uses we're ultimately looking at. But I think it's, the point is well taken.
And then the other question I have, if you'll give me just one more moment, is on coordinated entry. We already know that many housing developments that have long-term homeless units are sitting vacant, have been sitting vacant for sometimes a year or more because they can't get people through the coordinated entry process that are qualified or can't get referrals from that. So I've had several developers just this last, over the last 10 days that have been contacting me about this concern. Want to make sure that we are not going to require people to go through coordinated entry or through any specific process, but the community would be able to identify folks to access those, access these new resources in the way that is most appropriate for that community.
That's a point, that's a point well taken. And we will note that coordinated entry does not have to be used. It's not required. And it hasn't been decided how referrals will be made, but that point is well taken. We'll take that under consideration. Minnesota Housing will take that under consideration. Appreciate that feedback.
Thank you for letting me ask so many questions, and I'll go off my mic.
And we do have another hand raised. Mary, Mary, you have been unmuted by the organizer.
Thank you very much. This is Mary Tingerfall, previous commissioner at Minnesota Housing. And I want to take a chance to encourage Minnesota Housing to look very hard at the non-congregate shelter option. I know that it's maybe a little bit scary because you can't use the dollars for operating with non-congregate shelter. But I had the opportunity to study several states, Oregon, Vermont, and California, all of whom have quite successfully used dollars like this to convert hotels and other properties like dormitories, et cetera, into non-congregate shelter, and particularly in rural areas with a lot of success. And that was pointed out in the presentation that perhaps for rural areas, this could be a good solution. So my point is, there are good models out there. And even though it may be a little bit unusual and scary, I do encourage you to take a hard look on, at including it as an eligible activity.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
And we do have a number more in the chat. Will young adults, 18 to 24, also be prioritized?
They, that would be a preference question, again, as well, is if Minnesota Housing wants to make a preference. There may be state, I don't know if they can by state law. There's state laws that, around preferences in projects that may or may not be possible. But the requirements in this federal funding stream, they're included in all these qualifying populations. So they're eligible in all these other qualifying populations. They're experienced, if they meet those criteria, Minnesota Housing would have to establish a preference for that age category if they wanted funding for an activity to only go to that population.
And then another question in the chat. Are the consultations already completed?
Yes, the consultations have been completed.
Question from the chat. Will tribal nations be eligible for state funds?
James, that's to you.
From Minnesota Housing's perspective, yes. And I think unless there's something on the federal side of it, but we would otherwise not have any barriers on that side.
Right, there's, so there's, there is no, anyone is eligible, any entity is eligible. They're one of the eligible entities for these funds.
Another question. Where on the priority scale is the rehabilitation of supportive housing priorities to retain a supportive housing community that is in need of rehabilitation to maintain operations?
That's a good question. That has not, I don't remember if that specific statement was made, but there was, there were statements made by several people about the preservation of affordable housing and overall. So that certainly would be a part of that. A PSH project would be a part of that kind of feedback. Again, there have not been priorities made for any particular activity or project at this time, but that has been part of the feedback as a need.
Thank you. How will we be notified of the comment period?
Rachel, you want to speak to that, like when things will be posted?
Yeah, so like Heather and James and Stephanie have alluded to, you know, we've done consultations or in the process of putting together the allocation plan. There will be an e-news for sure going out. So you can go to HomeARP's website, make sure you're signed up to receive those notifications. It will probably be on social media and whatnot. And I would expect that the draft allocation plan will be out, published for public comment by, well, in March, for sure. Definitely not before then, but probably in early March. So, you know, the next few weeks, don't expect to see it. But yeah, sign up for the e-news notifications and you'll be notified when it's available. And then you can just check the website occasionally, too. It will be posted there.
Thank you. Another question from the chat. What are the income guidelines for this program?
It's a good question. There are not income guidelines for this program in the same way there are for other federal programs. There are some income, that's right, where Stephanie, it's not requirements, but income eligibility for the fourth qualifying population, for folks that are at risk of losing their housing and need assistance for increased housing stability. There are some income requirements there for eligibility, but it is, it's not the same as annual home. So it's a little bit different and has some recertification elements for continued assistance. Otherwise, the qualifiers are not income. The qualifiers are whether you are literally homeless, whether you are at risk of homelessness, and whether you are a survivor of domestic violence, sexual assault, trafficking. Those are the qualifiers, not income.
Is nonprofit and private partnership allowed?
It is for the federal funds, James. I'm assuming you probably have those partnerships apply.
Yeah, very common, not plugged in.
We do have another attendee with a hand raised. Carrie, you have been unmuted by the organizer.
Hi, I'm Carrie Porzlin, work with the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs. And just wanted to reiterate the need for housing resources for veterans and former service members. And we at the State of Minnesota, MDVA, have included former service members in our language because a lot of folks who served in the military do not qualify for federal veterans' benefits and don't see themselves as a veteran. So we have added former service members. Just wanted to say, we've seen a large increase in the numbers on the homeless veteran registry in the last two months, and in Hennepin specifically. In about the last 90 days, 50% of the referrals were folks who had seemed to be experiencing homelessness for the first time, or at least accessing like those traditional homeless systems. And so both funding for additional permanent supportive housing and Tennessee supports and prevention is imperative for this population. We have seen a lot of folks that have faced eviction in the last six months, like probably mirrors a lot of other populations in Minnesota. And also, it seems that a lot of people were just kind of unstablely housed with friends or different situations that had fallen through. So really having those additional prevention and Tennessee supports would be really important.
Thank you for your comment. We will note that.
Next question from the chat. Does the state have any plans to use funds for moving fees, storage fees, et cetera, to help fill the gaps?
Those are not activities that are eligible for this particular funding stream. I don't know, James or Rachel, if you fund those activities under other funding streams, but it isn't, those aren't eligible in this particular one.
It doesn't pop in my head, but I'd have to, there's a number of different programs out there.
Yeah, I think they're like FHPP, like some state funded. Like I think there are some state programs that would, state funds that would cover those costs, but not this particular program.
I have heard HUD can be very strict on eligibility requirements. Will this be true with these funds?
Yes. It's a very simple answer there. They, the eligibility is what the eligibility is, and there is not room for negotiation there with HUD.
Question from the chat. With temps once again falling below zero and horrible wind chill as a comment that does not need to be read, oh, sorry. Okay, we don't need to read. I will forward, sorry.
Okay.
Next question from the chat. If not income qualification, what would be the qualifiers?
The qualifiers are the four qualifying populations that we went over toward the beginning of the presentation. The four categories are one, literally homeless. Some person or household experiencing literal homelessness. Person or household that is at risk of homelessness. The third is person or household that is fleeing domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking. And then the fourth qualifying population or person or household that needs additional support and assistance to prevent homelessness and increase housing stability.
This is a comment to the question about referrals and coordinated entry. Minnesota Housing needs to do more to push developers to accept households from coordinated entry. Landlords are often rejecting the top five to 15 households because their rental criteria are too restrictive. The issue is not coordinated entry, but rather landlords not following through with servicing those households they agreed to serve when they got funding for these homeless priority households.
Thank you for the comment. We will, we will take it into consideration.
We gave support to some people to fill out the Home Help application since seven months and they have not, they have no approve. How long should our community wait to get approved?
That, I can, yeah, so Home Help is a, is a separate program. And, you know, I, I hear you and I'll provide that feedback to our Home Help program manager. But that's a separate funding stream, not, not subject to this hearing today.
Another comment from the chat. I would encourage prioritizing rehabilitation on capital funding. In addition to new construction, retaining supportive housing communities is of crucial importance.
Thank you.
We have a question. How long is the comment period?
15 days for the, once the allocation plan is posted.
Another comment. Seniors should have prioritized as fast as growing percent of homelessness and at risk. Folks leaving correctional facilities need priority in accessing the housing.
Thank you.
Is new construction housing for seniors eligible? How can we best connect with seniors who are homeless slash at risk of homelessness?
So new construction, affordable housing is eligible. Again, if it were to be for seniors, there would have to be an established preference and that would have to, we'd have to make sure that that did not violate any fair housing, any fair housing rules. But affordable housing, new construction is eligible. And I'm not exactly sure how to answer the second part of that question about how to connect more directly with seniors who are experiencing homelessness in Minnesota there, other than to point you toward your continuum of cares and their outreach efforts for those who are experiencing literal homelessness across the state.
Thank you. Where can we find a list of all funders for things like storage, moving, loss of food, et cetera?
I'm afraid I don't have a list of that type of resource. I can check internally and see if someone else does, if the contact information is, can be left in the chat, but I don't have anything off the top of my head on that one.
There's also another comment similar. FHPP and ESP funds cover moving and storage, et cetera?
I think Rachel, you said you were going to check on that.
Yeah, I believe they can, but again, I'm not, I don't work on this, on that program. And so I don't want to give improper information.
Yeah, I'll send that one again. If the commenter is willing to leave contact information in the chat, we can make sure that there's appropriate follow-up on that question.
And next question in the chat, it's a comment. Many community members have not been helped by Home Help. Again, this is, I think that's a different program. And the individual who sent the previous question would be able to send it to everyone about the storage and moving. And at the time, those are all of the questions, comments in the chat.
Thank you, Kristi.
I do have another hand raised. It is Sue.
Thanks. So ESP dollars and FHPP and the local American Rescue Plan dollars that communities have can be used for moving and storage costs. So I encourage you to look at those programs to access some of those resources.
Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate that.
And we have another question in the chat. When considering the special housing needs of folks who are fleeing domestic violence, sexual assault and human trafficking, please make sure you are partnering with victim service providers to provide guidance on the importance of safety planning for victims slash survivors. Confidentiality and anatomy and of their housing, or came in, right, of their housing is vital since they are often fleeing dangerous people.
Thank you very much for that comment.
My apologies. I believe I missed a question. There it is. It is my understanding for permanent affordable housing developed using HomeARP that it is possible to fund an operating reserve that can be used over time to support the property. Can you please explain how this will work and if Minnesota Housing will allow this within the underwriting standards for permanent affordable housing?
So what I can say is that is possible under the activity of development. I will defer to, nothing has been decided about what is going to be funded. So we can't fully answer that question. And I will defer to James around what may be existing already for underwriting for Minnesota Housing.
Yeah, thank you. Ultimately, if there are those types of uses that do make it into the allocation plan and firmly approved by HUD and so on, there are instances where reserves have been funded with eligible program funds to help with ongoing services. It is really a project by project basis and evaluation. And when we get to the point of if we are funding capital projects, technical assistance will be available to help answer those specific project questions.
And we have another hand raised for Sue.
Thank you for letting me make comments and ask so many questions. So going back to what former Commissioner Tinkertall was talking about, we have a number of local communities that are using their ARP dollars to do non-congregate shelters and create SROs and other types of housing. I'm wondering how, you talked a little bit earlier about coordinating with local home ARP dollars in jurisdictions that will get their own allocation. I'm wondering if there will be an attempt to also coordinate with how local communities are utilizing their American Rescue Plan dollars that they each also received. We're seeing a number of communities that are just hanging on to them and, and not utilizing them for housing opportunities and want to make sure that there is some pressure, basically, to get local communities to put some money into that also, as they may also be applying for these dollars. So that would be my recommendation is that there is some expectation that communities describe how they're currently using some of their other allocations to also help in creating affordable housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Kristy, is there anything else in the chat?
Just the question of can someone put a link to the programs that have the funding for storage and moving fees in the chat? Or send it out to everyone via email? And then Sue, I believe you have another question.
Yep. With the timeframe being pretty long out to 2030, I encourage Minnesota Housing to have in their ways that they set the program up is an expectation to utilize these dollars as soon as they become available and not to be waiting eight, seven years for us to get this housing developed. So that the priority would be to be able to move projects rapidly to create the housing opportunities for people within our communities. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kristi, are you able to put a link into the chat if I send you a link related to FHPP grant administrators?
I am, yes. If you send it to me, I can post it.
I will send you two links. One that is just a general link to the FHPP webpage. And FHPP is Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program. I, I will send that to Kristi to add into the chat and then a link specific to the current grant administrators, which is who you would want to contact. Minnesota Housing does not administer FHPP directly to those that need the resources. They are done through grant administrators. So we will put that list of grant administrators in the chat if Kristi is able to do that. And Kristi, watch for that email in just about 45 seconds here.
Thank you, James. Another question. Is it difficult to find all the resources that people need? Hoping there can be a central location for all resources one day.
Thank you for that comment.
And Sue, you have your hand up?
So with the governor's budget having significant dollars going into housing and also into shelter in the creation of both 24-hour shelters as well as non-congregate sites, just wanting to have some discussion in what is eventually put out as helpful to work within this is how all those dollars are going to be coordinated. I understand that potentially this could come out as a consolidated request at some point with all these other programs. We want to make sure if it's not, is how those, all those dollars, if the governor's budget is funded, which we hope it is, and at even higher levels, so that we are making sure that we are utilizing these dollars in communities that may not have access to some of those newer dollars, so that we can really get these dollars out to as many communities as possible.
Thanks, Sue.
Kristi, did you get that email?
I posted it in the chat, yes, to all attendees.
Thank you.
And are we caught up on questions?
One actually just came in. Yep. I encourage Minnesota Housing to allow the use of HomeARP dollars for operating reserves in connection with developing permanent affordable housing. These dollars are intended to support operating costs, including things like the cost of front desk staff, but is not intended to fund supportive services.
Thank you.
Another one that just came in on the chat. One of the difficulties facing housing stability providers is to convince landlords to rent/lease the people with risk of homelessness, even if the organization cosigns for the client.
Thank you for that feedback.
And we do have Sue again in the, with a hand raised.
Thanks. I was trying to type something in and maybe I just raised my hand too. So if, what is the administrative cap? And then the risk mitigation fund is also in the Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program to help in incentivizing landlords to rent to folks that may have had difficult rental histories or other issues in their, in their background that may, some landlords may want to preclude them from, from renting. So there is that fund and that also is targeted in the governor's budget for significant increases also. So the real question though was what is the administrative cap under this program?
Stephanie, can you remind me? I'm blanking at the moment.
I believe it's 15% is the cap.
Up to, yeah.
Yeah.
James, if there are no additional comments?
There are no other questions. We can probably wrap it up, but just to remind folks to that, first of all, thank you for coming and providing feedback and giving us, you know, allowing us to answer your questions. The draft allocation plan will be out for public comment and review with 15 days to comment. Make sure you're signed up on the HomeARP webpage to get updates and it will go out through an e-news notification that has been posted. And also you can, you know, just check out our webpage on Minnesota Housing's webpage. And that will be where you can find the draft allocation plan when it's ready for public comment. So, thank you.
There were just two additional quick questions. Did you say 15 or 50%?
15.
Yeah. Thank you. And then where can we send comments to?
It will be in the notice, but, and it's, there's a webpage, there's a, sorry, an email for HomeARP that will be in the notice and also currently on our, on our webpage for HomeARP. And if you want, you can also send comments via mail. The mailing address will be, will be there to the attention of HomeARP.
And Kristi, I'm going to send you an email with a direct link to our home ARP website on the Minnesota Housing page that includes contact information. And is a good place to sign up for the e-news if you're not already signed up for the e-news. So just one second and I will put that to Kristi. So everyone has that.
Receive an email from a caller, a caller who would like to speak. If you are not online, can you press star six? See if you can unmute your own line? For that caller, I am not hearing you. If you're pressing star six to unmute your line, I will forward your contact information to the group.
While we're waiting there, Kristi, it looks like the link in the chat is going to the FHPP map. Maybe there's an error with the link there, or more likely I just sent you the one just down from that. So I'm going to send you another link that is actually the list of administrators and contact information for FHPP. Just one second on that. My apologies.
Thank you. And I did just post the, the HomeARP link.
Okay.
That link has not been posted, James.
That works on my computer. Hopefully it works for everyone else too. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your comments and questions today. Recognizing that some of the questions don't have full answers, which is the stage of the project where we are at. So we do welcome those comments, and ultimately, when the draft plan is posted and with the e-news that goes out or via our website, we do welcome those additional comments and questions related to the draft allocation plan before it is finalized. We know that this is time out of your day, and we do appreciate you sharing your time with us.
I believe that concludes our public hearing time. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you.